Okay, it is 6:30 PM. We're going to call this meeting to order of the August 16th, 2021 Select Board. The first item is the consent agenda. Which I had ready for you.
Sorry. Move to accept the consent agenda, the West Concord Junction Cultural District Renewal proclamation, and two one-day special liquor licenses for Verro Farm on August 24th, 2021, and August 25th, 2021, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is the Town Manager's Report.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, just a few quick items. One of the things that I wanted to update the board on was we did have two days of training with our DEIB advisor at Hurley Wales and with our senior management team, as well as a few other public-facing division heads. And it was really a great session. I think one of the things that, and I think as we work with a committee, hopefully that'll be appointed tonight, it was really a big step on our team's journey towards a more diverse, equitable, and inclusive organization where people feel like they belong, which is the ultimate goal. So, you know, we talked about a lot of things. We went through some exercises, gave, you know, really kind of, they had some discussion topics that were really thought-provoking and really, in many ways, was also a team-building exercise for SMT. And so, we are looking at a few next steps, which is really, really the biggest next step is to really look at what is our framework for our, what is going to be the model that we're going to use to try and become, like I said, an organization that is not only, that not only wants to promote DEIB, but that is also prepared for people who potentially want to work for the town, and that they, that they feel like it is a diverse, equitable, inclusive organization in which they belong. That's, I mean, it's, it's one thing to want to, to improve diversity, and we certainly want to do that, but the other thing is, is are we ready for it? And that's the, the big thing, is making sure that we, as an organization, are ready. So there was a lot of talk about, you know, microaggression, implicit bias, like some of the things that, you know, that you really need to figure out, because if it's just, you know, attraction of a more diverse applicants is something that's one part of it, but if they get here, and we're not welcoming, and they don't feel like they belong, it's almost, it's not almost worse, but it's, it's really destructive for all sides. And so we want to make sure that we're putting the building blocks together as, as an organization to focus on. We're the next generation, and I think that's, I think I've said this before, it's, it's a twofold goal. The first is, like I said, DEIB, and really being a great organization, but the other part of it is, is it is a talent attraction strategy. And one of the things that, you know, Ed Hurley Wales has been in HR for his, I think his, almost his entire career, and he said that, he was showing some statistics that organizations that do a good job on DEIB attract and retain talent at a much higher rate. And that's something that I think, to be an employer of choice, is really one of the things we're trying to build towards, and to be an employer of choice, you need to be in an organization that really knows, really raises the bar on, on those issues, and is really self-aware about how we conduct ourselves and treat others. So, more to come on that. Like I said, it's, you've heard me say it, and he said, "It's a journey." And I, and like I said, it was an important step, and I look forward to getting to the next step. So, town, speaking of next steps, townhouse renovations are very near completion. We're going to reopen officially on Tuesday, September 7th. We are in the process of planning a little public reception, probably in the morning, just have to figure out the details on that, to welcome people back. But it, it looks great. If anyone on the board wants to come by and see you, we can certainly arrange to have you there and show you around. But for the, for the general public, it'll be September 7th. We'll be back for in-person business. Any questions about the townhouse? And actually, in, on the broader project, Kate Hodges and Ryan Orr will be here on the 7th to really, at the meeting on the 7th, to kind of go through the projects, you know, how to go, what were the obstacles we encountered, is there anything, are there going to be any kind of follow-up items? Like furniture is, is one of the, is one of the big ones that we're, we're going to have to put a little more work into, but they can kind of talk through some of that.
So, my question is, which departments will be moving back to the townhouse?
So clerk, treasurer, treasurer-collector, you know, kind of finance administration, payroll, finance, and the accountant on the first floor. So, some, some finance administration staff may go over to Court Lane, but basically those same departments will be back.
And the second floor will be the Town Manager's Office?
Town Manager's Office will, will stay, will be there, but the deputy town manager is going to stay on Church Street, given the proximity to a lot of, a lot of Kate's agencies, most notably Harvey Wheeler, the COA, and REC are, have a lot of presence out there, so she's going to stay on Church Street.
So, and personnel will be on the second floor? Personnel?
HR's, yeah, we're actually going to, we'll have the opportunity to expand the HR office space a little bit, which is long overdue, and so they'll, they'll be able to, so sustainability will probably be located on Church Street as well. Facilities, I don't know if you ever saw Ryan Orr's office in the TMO, but it really wasn't an office, and so he's, he's got a regular office space now, and so some of those, so those functions are all over 55 Church Street.
Right. So, my question is, so the public knows where to go for customer service, is there going to, I know you put something out a few months ago, but now with the town hall opening, something about what these public office hours will be for these staff people?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll put up- For townhouse, I think everybody else has it already posted on their websites and their voicemails, but we'll update it for townhouse. And we can send a reminder to people of where things are-
Great.
And what, you know, when the in-person hours are and everything else. Most of it's the same. I mean, the biggest change is probably out of the, the TMO, with having facilities and sustainability and, and the Public Information Officer over Church Street, but they've been there since, since the beginning of the pandemic.
Right. Well, I think what's different is telling everybody that it's going to open, and that the office hours for the public might be different than they used to be. So, posting that-
Yep. We'll reinforce that, for sure.
Great.
Can you, can you get us a detailed list and schedule as to when each office is going to open and what their hours are and where they will be?
Yep. It's, most of that is in that presentation that I gave, and then we can just update time.
It was a few weeks ago.
There was a few, I thought you were on the board. Yeah, I gave a presentation.
They didn't give any dated, like, specific dates or specific details.
I'll, I'll send it along.
Because I don't think we, we don't know those, we don't have that information.
Well, right, we, we didn't have it for the townhouse in that presentation.
Yeah, the only one absent was the townhouse.
Right.
All the other ones are, have been, have been living according to that schedule that we presented.
Okay. That would be good to get that, thank you.
Okay, sorry. Just making a note to make sure I get the updated schedules out. Speaking of the Sustainability Director, we are in the process of that screening, and we got, I think, a very competitive pool of candidates. We did have some stakeholders from CAB and CSEC and CMLP help us sift through the applicant pool and identify some shortlists, and so those interviews will be starting, I think, this week or next. And so that's, like I said, I'm excited. I've seen the resumes of the, of the group, and it's a pretty, it's a talented pool, we're lucky on that one. And we're going to get, I think we're going to get somebody great out of that, of the applicants we have. So, this is, this is kind of a, a big thing, and I hope people, especially those of us, those of you who are customers of the town's solid waste recycling program, I know we have a number of private curbside haulers, but if you're on the town's service, they're going to be doing a, there's a survey that I think is going on now, if you go to CPW's recycling page, there's a survey looking for feedback from people about the program, and we're going to be doing an RFP for potentially a new solid waste and recycling vendor. Right now, it's waste management.
Are you taking the survey?
Have you?
Yes.
How long did it take you?
Five minutes.
Perfect.
Great.
It, it's a big deal.
Even then, it seemed to be going over the same topics like three different ways, but, you know, it was clear what they were trying to find, get input on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the markets for solid waste and recycling have changed dramatically over the past five years. Part of it is the Commonwealth closing landfills, part of it is China's national sword policy on recycling, like, there's a lot of, there are a lot of variables that have really dramatically impacted those markets, and that has dramatically impacted our costs. And so, this survey is really designed to get valued customer feedback, because if we, if there's something that customers really want, we want to be able to let them know it's either going to cost you more, or, or like, you know, this change will save us some money. I know there's a few specific things that could probably save a little money, but I know they're not customer preference at this time, and so I think it's kind of getting that information so we can communicate with people and, and figure out which way we want to go. And then, also from CPW, I believe they'll be mobilizing next week to do the crosswalk at, the crossing upgrades at Sudbury Road and Garfield Road. And then, as you, I just had a quick note about the NRC review, the request for determination for some soil borings at 68 Commonwealth Ave and 300 Baker Ave, associated with the Aspera River Pedestrian Bridge. So that project is still going, going well. And then the Planning Board did meet with the West Concord Advisory Committee to work on a preamble for the design guidelines for West Concord. So that's, I think it's kind of a fun project. I don't know if that was going when you were on the Planning Board, but I've been a part of a number of design guideline projects, and it's, you know, when you, it's really helpful, and I know some people look at design guidelines as some kind of restriction, but it's something that really binds everybody together, and we see it around downtown.
They've been very positively influencing what's been happening in West Concord.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think it's, it's definitely a benefit to everybody. And I think that's about it for me.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just have one question. Great to hear the DEIB went well. When is the next activity? Do you know that everyone will be involved in?
I don't, off the top of my head. It, it hasn't been scheduled. I do, we did, I did receive kind of a next steps communication this afternoon.
Within the quarter, you know?
No, I think we want to keep, we want to keep the ball rolling. We want to keep the momentum.
We just want it some sense of, general.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It's unscheduled as we sit here now.
Yeah, that's right.
But we do, we do want to make sure we keep, we keep moving and maintain, like I said, that momentum and keep our journey moving forward.
Great, thanks.
Not that I look forward to this being a part contributor to the Town Manager's Report, but is there any update on the COVID front in terms of either state policy?
Yeah.
Our own plans?
Yes. And actually, it's funny, I was just working on a draft news and notices this afternoon with Aaron Stevens. No update in terms of a policy change. I think Susan Rask did talk to some members of the Board of Health at their meeting. I don't know who the liaison is, but the report I got was that they talked about it, and they wanted to stick with MD Massachusetts Department of Public Health guidelines, and which means not instituting a local indoor mask mandate. I know a number of communities are, but they considered, looked at the data, and at this time, they're saying they don't believe it's necessary, because I think of high vaccination rates in Concord.
Right, yeah.
Obviously, I'm going to support the Board of Health's decision, they're much more qualified to make that judgment than I. So, we are going to send out a news and notices, I think tomorrow, that basically says, "We are watching it. Here's the link to the DPH guidance that we are going to, that we're currently following, and we are also watching for more detailed information about vaccine boosters." I don't know if we'll be involved in that. As you know, we were involved in vaccinations, and then we weren't, and then we were, and so I'm not sure how that's all going to roll out, but we are, you know, we talk about it, if not weekly, bi-weekly, and even individually, almost daily, about what's happening, and we're watching it, but we have, for reasons that are, I think, unique to Concord, and our, and our, the data that's here, we're taking the approach of following MD PH guidance, and until the Board of Health feels differently, that's what we'll do. So, I guess that's, it's watch and wait.
Okay. Other questions?
Look, do we have any further information on the Hurley Wales report that was, that was produced, that was the subject of the executive summary?
There's no update. I think I've already addressed that.
And there was no report?
You got the report.
But that was a summary of the report.
It was, okay. I think we've already addressed this. I mean, I'm happy to have Mr. Hurley Wales come here and talk to you about his report, but I, we've already addressed that.
Okay. Possibly on a future agenda, that might fit in anyway, to have-
Sure.
Ed Hurley Wales come in. Okay. All right. I have two chair's remarks. First of all, we want to invite everybody to the Honored Citizen of the Year reception, which will be held on September 19th. Right now, the location is going to be Harvey Wheeler, and it will be from 2:00 to 4:00.
2:30, right now.
All right, it's 2:30 now. So, mark your calendar, and, thank you, Henry. September 19th. We did a wonderful job two years ago, and we really look forward to celebrating with Lee's Woodward this year. And my other announcement is, I'm going to be working through Jeremy to send a letter, and I, to several committees, and I want to get some board feedback, so each of you will be getting kind of a copy. This is about focused meetings coming up in the fall. As you know, September 20th, we're going to have a brainstorming on the middle school alternative funding, and tentatively, I am scheduling October 18th as a focused meeting on transportation, and November 15th as a focused meeting on progress and next steps for envision Concord. So, the goal for these meetings is to invite all the stakeholders and get all the topics and subtopics. So I'm going to be putting together those lists, and then I want to send it out to you guys to make sure, because I'll bet I'm going to forget some, somebody, and I don't want to forget anybody. So I just want to have your eyes on it before it goes out. And that'll probably be coming, I don't know, early next week or something. So that's it for my chair's remarks, and our next item is to appoint Michael Lawson to the Massachusetts 250th American Revolution Anniversary Commission.
Move to appoint Michael Lawson of 1695 Lowell Road to the Massachusetts 250th American Revolution Anniversary Commission.
Second. Linda?
I would just, have we given any thought to how often we, and in what format, we hope to get feedback from Mike on committee happenings, because so much of what goes on there will also impact some of our-
That's a good point.
-other efforts.
Right. Would you like him to come, you know, some schedule, like quarterly or whatever, to the board?
I think initially, oh, yeah.
Okay? All right.
And then at a certain point, it may need to be more frequent than that, just because of-
Sure.
-how it transpires.
Okay. So do we want to add that to the motion, or?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Move to appoint Michael Lawson of 1695 Lowell Road to the Massachusetts 250th American Revolution Anniversary Commission, and recommend a quarterly cadence of updates to the board from Michael.
The Select Board.
To the Select Board.
Right. Okay. Second. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
And we thank Mike for volunteering for this important post. It'll be very exciting as we move forward. Next, we have another exciting event. Carlin Reed is here to present the 2021 Head Access Program Awards.
Thank you, Karen. Carlin Reed, Chair of the PEG Access Advisory Committee. I'm here to give the first-ever 2021 PEG Access Program Awards to over 20 groups and individuals from Concord and Carlisle for the public education and government PEG videos and contributions. Community-created public access TV videos are the heart and soul of local TV programming. The citizen-run PEG Access Advisory Committee created this award to recognize our local producers of top-quality videos that were created between March 2020 and April 2021, and aired through our local public access TV station, Minuteman Media Network, or MMN. COVID restrictions during this time on on-person, on in-person meetings are pretty tough on all of us. Watching these meetings and programs on MMN's TV channels 8, 9, and 99, and on Concord's YouTube channels and website kept people entertained and informed on local matters. I'm making this presentation on behalf of our committee. Those committee members are Scott Hopkinson, Vince Carlson, Court Booth, and our former clerk, Ruth Lauer. Our newest member is going to be Corey Atkins, who I'm hoping you approve later on this afternoon. The plaque honorees are the following people and organizations. The Town of Concord, the Town of Carlisle, the Concord Council on Aging, the Carlisle Council on Aging, the Concord and the Concord School Systems, I'm sorry, the Concord and the Concord-Carlisle School Systems, the CCHS Chorus with Joseph Marr and Debbie Smith, the Minuteman National Historical Park, Concord Days, a program with Tammy Rose and Stephen Smith, the Concord Players, KRPW Local Look, a local news program with Peggy Wardjman and Stefan Bader, the League of Women Voters of Concord-Carlisle, the Village Art Room, and Frank Breen. These honorees' names will be inscribed on a recognition plaque, which I'll show you in just a moment here, that will be hung on the MMN Studio Wall of Honor, which is located inside the Concord-Carlisle High School at 500 Walden Street in Concord. We also recognize the efforts by the, by the staff of MMN, Minuteman Media Network, who worked hard to make sure the events, that these events were recorded, that the committee meetings, the educational, historic, sports, artistic programs, and public events were presented during this COVID period. Those staff members in particular are Aaron Stevens, Kate Hodges, Mark Pauley, the interim station manager, Eduardo Freitas, Bill Lebchevitz, Isabel Germino, and the town's two Zoom administrators, Chris Carmody and Jeremy Romano. So thank you all very much. Now, I'm going to show you the plaque here, but I want to let you know that MMN is going to be celebrating its third year of operations as of October 1st, as the town-run local television station. Okay, what I'd like to is have Mark Pauley come up now, because I'm going to give him the plaque. Okay. It's a beast, I know.
It's great.
I think you have to sit, I don't know where you have to be. I don't know. Where's it, where's it?
It looks good.
You actually must have to do this stuff.
Then we can do-
And then you twist like this, okay. You can tell-
Zoom in, we can do the zoom. All right, here we go, here we go.
Are we done now? Are we done? Are we there? Okay, good.
And then we can applaud.
You guys can applaud. Yeah, because we're saying thank you. It's a full house.
There we go.
Okay, are we done?
All right, we're done.
We're done. This thing is heavy. All right, bye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much for your indulgence on this.
Thank you very much.
On behalf of Aaron Stevens, who couldn't be here today, I humbly will hang this at the studio. All right, thank you very much. All of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark, and all of your staff. Thank you, Carlin, for all your effort, and all those people who did programming during the COVID period. Great effort. Thanks so much. Okay, we move on now to the Recreation Commission Administrative Code. Who is the liaison for this?
I have the liaison.
Okay.
Well, you have the chair on Zoom as well, Anna McKeon.
Ah, okay.
Director.
Would you please state your name and address?
Well, the Recreation Director.
She's, she's a director of Parks and Rec.
Oh, oh.
Recreation, rather.
I've forgotten her name. Anna?
Anna McKeon.
Anna McKeon, right?
Yes, hi there.
Hi, Anna. Thanks for being with us.
Absolutely.
Do you want to tell us what are the main changes in the new code?
Sure. So, the documents that you've seen us update most recently are reflective of changes since the last administrative code was approved, which was 1982. So naturally, there were a handful of changes that we needed to make in regards to position titles, as well as other, just procedural changes that have happened over the last 40 years. So largely, some of the changes that you'll see on the commission, the administrative code, rather, is, you know, spelling out some specifics. So number two specifically, oftentimes, the public or other groups come to the Recreation Commission looking for letters of support. We thought it was important to spell out explicitly that the commission can and should do that when, when requests align with the goals of Concord's recreation initiatives. Other pieces include, you know, assisting the Recreation Department, not just the Recreation Director, in a variety of capacities, including the review of fee structures instead of setting fee structures for programs. So, so the pieces really are just more reflective of the last, the changes over the last 40 years, really, and the procedures involved with running a Recreation Department of this size, and, and the support needed and able to be received from a, a commission.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from board members?
It was nice to see all the updates, Anna. Forty years, I think we were ready. And I just want to remind Jeremy and others that it's helpful to have the original date of the document, and then also the revised date before it gets posted. So thank you for all the work on that.
Other comments or questions? I have a few questions. On number six, it looks like previously, the commission was the one who set the fees and the rates, and now it's revised to provide feedback on the fees and rates. Is that something that's been happening anyway for the past number of years, and this code is just catching up now?
Yes. I've been with the department since 2016, and we've always discussed fees and large adjustments with the commission, but they've never been the ones to set it. We run hundreds of programs annually, some that pop up rather quickly, others that we plan for in advance, so that, that ask to have the commission be the ones to approve all fees wasn't a realistic procedure that was being able to be followed.
So, you and your staff set a proposed fee, and then you discuss it with the commission? Is that-
We don't necessarily discuss it with the commission. We let the commission know when our brochures are coming out and the sorts of programs that we'll be offering. We have a fee structure in place for our programs, so if it's a vendor-run program, you know, and we look at the surrounding communities for what the, the rates are for similar programs, to make sure that we're not overpricing or underpricing the product and the class. But we, we certainly bring it up with the commission and make them aware of the brochure and what's coming.
Okay. And the other change I noticed was in number three. There was a phrase added, "as requested or directly by the town manager." I don't have the exact wording-
Yeah, that's, that's what it says.
Right.
I think that's to align with the charter, because, I mean, from the charter's perspective, the town manager has the purview to hire this position. So, in effect, you know, the Recreation Commission could, could advise, but it's not provided for explicitly in the charter, so this provides a way that, that could be accommodated.
Okay. All right. Other questions from board members? Okay, then. Does someone, Matt, do you want to make a motion?
Yes. To move to approve the revised Recreation Commission Administrative Code is included in the meeting materials with the addition of the original publication date.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Anna.
Thank you.
And Kate, I see you there, thank you also. Okay, we now move on to reviewing legal costs, and I see we have Mina Macarius with us. Mina, if you'd like to speak, you can come up to this microphone here. Let's make sure technically we have everything there.
No, I think what we want to do is just provide an overall update on the legal expenses at the end of the fiscal year. The last three to four months of the fiscal year were really much busier than normal. I think the Esterbrook trial is obviously something that the community's been watching closely, and there was a lot of activity there. But I also, there was also the Simes litigation and a few other things, and I thought it would be helpful if Mina kind of went through and broke some of that activity down, so everyone could understand kind of what drove the costs in the last fiscal year.
Okay. Take it away, Mina.
Thank you, and I know there's a memorandum from us in your packet, which was in the public packet as well. So as Stephen said, the idea was to check in every six months or so. We spoke in January, before that we spoke, I think, last time around this time of year by Zoom, so I haven't seen you all in person other than town meeting, nice to see you. And wanted to give you just a sense, really, the three components of the budget now that were through FY '21, and what drove costs in that second half. Primarily, it was litigation, both the Esterbrook litigation and the, as Stephen said, the Simes litigation. The total non-Esterbrook matter budget from December through June was $165,000. Of that, $25,000 were related indirectly to Esterbrook. They had to do with public records requests and other matters that might have been in the general matter, but were related. Most of the rest, about a little bit over half, involved advising both the Zoning Board of Appeals towards the later end, the Planning Board all of December, and to some degree the Select Board with respect to changes in the earth-removal bylaw, which affected the Simes application. That was then litigated in both federal and state court, and as you know, although we didn't prevail in state court, we also didn't advise appealing that decision. That case is now done. All of the briefing happened in May and June, which was unfortunately, financially unfortunate, the same time that the Esterbrook trial was happening. You have in the memo a two-to-three-page explanation on the Esterbrook costs and why they differed from our last estimate. They were higher, admittedly, a lot more happened during, from where we were to trial than anticipated last time we spoke. And a lot of that had to do with Harvard's reentry into the case, and we've talked about that before and sort of what the reasoning there is. The discovery between January and April alone was about $57,000. However, actually, I should say that's a spending from January to April. $16,000 of that were due to public records requests, including from anonymous requesters, and significant amounts of documents that were produced, thousands of documents were produced. We haven't heard a word about what was done since, but they were produced. And admittedly, I think one thing, just as a practice going forward, updating budgets closer to trial when we have a trial or when we have a significant proceeding like that needs to happen. There was perhaps a miscommunication there, I don't want to say perhaps. There wasn't, not enough communication from our part about what to expect in May going into town meeting. We hadn't had any trial dates at that point. You knew what was coming up, but perhaps we didn't put the numbers on it quite as closely in that sort of preparation to trial. And so that's where we are. Fortunately, that trial is now done. We're doing post-trial briefing, which we anticipate to be, unfortunately, on the more expensive side of post-trial briefing, given all of the testimony, all of the experts, six days of trial, closer to, I almost hesitate to put a number out there, but it's, we're thinking closer to $20,000 between now and September when we get to closing arguments. And then it's in the judge's hands, and there shouldn't be much, if anything, spent on Esterbrook in the litigation side of the House until we get a decision, and hopefully that's it. That's absent any further action after that. And the Simes, as I said, the state court case is done, the federal case is not done, but we believe it has been largely mooted by the state court decision, and we haven't finalized that. The Zoning Board of Appeals did hear the earth-removal permit application this past week with significant input from us on some of the legal issues. They didn't take a vote just yet, but they took sort of a straw poll and instructed staff and us to write a denial decision. I can't speak, obviously, for the applicant whether they will appeal that decision or not, but that is obviously a decision that was in the zoning board's hands, whether or not to deny the special permit under the Zoning Bylaw. So, that could result in litigation, but absent that, there will be no other act of litigation, hopefully, this fall, but that depends on Simes. That's it. I'm happy to take questions.
Sure. Thank you, Mina, and I like your suggestion about more proactive communication. So if you see, let's say, something else happening with either Esterbrook or Simes or anything else, you know, that might be significant cost, you know, keep us up to date, we appreciate that.
In addition to more proactive information sharing, I think that we may want to consider more proactive management of risk versus benefits in terms of litigation or conduct. There's always a balance between how much effort you put into it related to how that's likely to affect the result. And of course, the inclination of an attorney is to leave no stone unturned and always be prepared for the unexpected, but at some point it becomes counterproductive.
Sorry, I don't want to.
And the other question I have to ask is, can you give us at least an approximate number for the cost of the Esterbrook litigation from day one to the present?
Before I answer that, I answered the first question in terms of a suggestion. I mean, I think I just want to point out that in the five or six years where I've been in charge of town council services, we've averaged about one to, zero to two cases at most per year in litigation, other than the Esterbrook case. So when it comes to these zoning decisions, we're actually, I feel, I completely agree with you, Mr. Day. That is exactly what a town should be doing. It's exactly the approach we took to the Simes case, is what's the benefit, what's the cost, what's it worth? When it looks like something is going towards that route, one thing I will say is that the staff in this town has been excellent over the years. Marcia and Elizabeth and Susan Rask got a lot of credit for alerting us in the town manager's office when something looks like it might be trouble. Those of you who have been on the planning or zoning board, you probably know that. We don't get consulted on everything, which is because they also know a lot, but when we do get consulted, it has often stayed off litigation. In terms of the total costs, I believe, I know it's north of a million, I don't remember the exact number. It is, Carrie might have that.
I do.
I don't want to misspeak and then be quoted as misspeaking. I'd rather have the right number from Carrie.
You'd rather be quoted as not knowing.
No, I'd rather be quoted as being careful and asking a data source since I'm standing in front of my.
So, it's $1,510,000.
Thank you.
My guess was going to be 1.3, and when you add in the final cost from the past two months, that makes perfect sense, so I should have gone for it.
Yeah, so the town meeting-related expenses, I mean, was this year kind of a typical level of expense? I mean, given your five or six years you've been working this, or was it less or more?
I would say it was about typical. It's a little bit less in the sense that it was fewer days, so actual time at town meeting was significantly less, it was only one day's worth. It was a little bit, there was several zoning articles, which took up some time. There were a couple of the fossil fuel bylaw, for instance, that did take a ton of time and requires some actual legal thought and analysis to it, and how it's presented and some questions on it. So I would say it's a little less than average, I guess, overall, because of the fewer time, the lesser amount of days, and there were fewer other bylaw changes and fewer citizen petitions.
Yeah, I was just surprised at the amount, because I'm a layman, but just from my perspective, relative to the other town meetings that I've attended, there seem to be fewer matters that had legal ramifications and, like you said, a much more efficient execution of the town meeting itself. So I just would have expected lower than normal expenses. I thought it just seemed like a lot of money just for that, you know, when there weren't really heavily controversial items. That's what, again, it's very hard for me to evaluate as a layman, but I was surprised.
So one thing I would say is there are times when I get no questions, and it's probably with the sets of articles that I'm worried about the most, have spoken to Carmen, the moderator, and to staff about the most. So it is kind of hard to tell, to be honest, because you're, the drafting of motions, the drafting of the warrant, doesn't.
It's all.
But that being said, I would say, I think we said 14,000 total.
Yeah.
That's actually probably on the lower end, year to year. I think it's probably closer to 20 most years, and Stephen, you're nodding, and Carrie, I don't know if that.
Okay, fair, just not familiar with this.
When we have home rule petitions, do you participate in the drafting of the actual documents that goes to the legislature for enactment?
It depends. The ones that have come from citizens, we have tried to, subject to the town manager's approval, coach along the way. We usually try to get it right by the time town meeting votes on it. The transmittal to the legislator itself is fairly ministerial at that point, if the legislation is drafted. When it goes up to the legislator, we, from time to time, will get calls from the legislative staff or the governor's office asking questions about changes they want to make, but by that point, usually the substance is pretty much settled.
Other questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Thank you, Mina, for coming and explaining this. Seems to me that we've talked about legal expenses a lot, and we've had, my feeling is that we're given low-ball figures for what things are going to cost, you know, ongoing. And I don't, I don't, I remember talking about the trial, or hearing about the trial, and the number was, was, I'm not going to save my memories 100%, but I was quite surprised to see the latest bill, and I, in my mind, it could have been, it would have been helpful to have, because I'm kind of a numbers person, a spreadsheet that said, this is how much you build, and it went through, and that's probably what Carrie has, and it went to this, this item, this item, this item, you know, Simes, Esterbrook, other, you know, document requests. Because I can't figure out how these all fit into like a budget, budget versus actual kind of thing, so it's, it's good information, but in my mind, it's really not complete. So, I mean, it doesn't tie like to the billing, what I was looking for.
So, this may be just a difference of approach, but I hear you. Maybe I'm more of a narrative person. But I would say, just to make that clear, we have, every month when we send the bills to the town, there are, there's a general matter that has within it separate task codes for kind of the larger town boards and officials that consume any of our time. So that's split up that way, and that's easily trackable. That's really reflected here in the distinction between, for instance, public records requests generally, which the sort of 25,000, we found out, were mostly Esterbrook. There are very few other ones we were involved with. The town meeting would all be in the Select Board general sort of category, and that's where that 14,000 is. We have a separate bill starting actually this January for litigation. That's where all of those Simes matters were. It's split out by litigation, so currently the open matters on the Simes state court case, the federal case, there's another category for things like, for instance, we were consulted very briefly on the CCTV case at one point, and that will be billed there. We do keep a separate matter open for construction-related matters in case those ever blow up into something bigger. That was pretty miniscule this year. There was a couple of times where one of our construction lawyers, who's been practicing for 20 years, did some work for, on the CTIP project, the Kambers Turnpike project. And then the Esterbrook matter was split up into litigation costs and non-litigation-related public records, open meeting law, other issues. All of the bill in that recent bill, almost entire bill, is trial preparation, within Esterbrook, is trial preparation and trial itself. The tough part with trial, admittedly, is, again, I acknowledge, we probably should have updated that estimate ahead of it. Once you're in trial, there's sort of no out, and that bill always going to end up in a two-week period at most, regardless. We were hoping it was a shorter trial, ended up being a few days longer, and I've explained that in the memo, but those were all going to be on one bill, it's just which month it ended up in.
Right, I think that's really helpful. I agree with Susan. I think you're probably sending some very detailed bills, as you just explained, and Carrie has them, but we don't always know, and we're not able to track. So maybe we need two types of communication. One, like you said, being more proactive on your end, and then on our end, maybe we can get a quarterly report or some kind of regular report about how we're doing in terms of some of the major categories like litigation. Since town meeting has asked the town several times to try and track this better, we should maybe be keeping an eye on it a little more.
Would it help, or would it be feasible to have periodic meetings with town council, town manager, and representative of the Select Board to review and to make suggestions about the management of their legal expenses?
We can do it that way, or we can just have a one-page quarterly summary or monthly summary, or whatever's the easiest administratively, so that we know that we're tracking it.
But once you get that report, the money is already spent.
Well, let's take, for example, what Mina was just talking about, about the estimate of post-trial briefing, getting 20,000. So now let's keep an eye on that, and if you think something changes all of a sudden, you know, let us know, and, you know, we don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but we have to strike that balance, because town meeting has said to us several times now.
That brief is due on October 4th, is it?
That's right.
Okay.
So, a couple of things I can suggest. Certainly, if things seem to be, if there are suggestions, you know, and I would sort of defer to the manager on how to best collect those, we'll hear that. We have no problem with that, and we'll definitely hear. There are, it's been our practice, especially in the pre-Esterbrook days, when the only major budget item was the general bill, we typically will highlight every month as a cover sheet to the bill, the three or four matters that sort of drove costs that month. And you can see patterns developing, right? So with the WR Grace settlement, which I think ended up being $15,000 total, but over several months, it was often the biggest biller, that was listed there. In the past couple of months, you would have seen Simes before litigation, you would have seen the 48-Y of Pittsburgh case, so you would see those, and those don't reveal. those don't reveal the privileged information that you're entitled to keep privileged, exactly what the conversations were, or so on. So that's certainly something that perhaps we can do that. It's a little bit tougher when you're within one litigation, exactly what the time was spent, just only because that's the actual time.
I don't think it needs to be separated out too discreetly. I mean, the content is not really the.
Yeah, we don't need a lot of meat on it.
Just, you know, this issue, this is the cost.
So we do, we do pass that along every month.
Right.
Mr. Gaines, right, that is after it's happened. When we do see something, I think where the lesson learned from Estabrook is, we had plenty of conversations, I think. Linda, probably fewer conversations over the years about the Estabrook litigation. We had plenty of conversations in executive session. Some had particular costs associated with them, and some were in the middle of the litigation, and, you know, weren't necessarily easy to estimate, but the lesson learned is we will try to do our best. And so that post-trial briefing I mentioned, we'll try to do our best. Will we know in the middle of it, if we've hit a real snag, we'll try, again, we'll try our best to do that. That's a little bit more within our control than as opposed to a quarter other party.
Terry? Sorry, just to kind of build on the point Mina is making, and actually the point Henry made initially about the risk assessment of litigation, that's something that, as a risk manager in my role, that I've done regularly, it's really an important part of the role. And so how those conversations take place, are discussions about strategy. In the case of Estabrook, there are usually two select board members who have been designated to kind of be like a, an executive committee, if you will, or, you know, a task force or something like that, to work with council, and me, and town staff, and everybody else to kind of go through strategy, so we can be nimble and hear what's happening and say, yeah, this sounds right, yeah. Or, whoa, hold the phone, we ought to go to executive session and get the other boards by, and as Mina noted, you've been a part of those, Terry and Linda, you were, and Mike, I think, was a part of many, many of them. And it's the strategy that is really the important role for us to play. I think town council, Anderson Krieger generally, but I also think Mina specifically, has done a good job of taking that strategy, that, talking us through the strategy and deciding where do we want to go, and then executing that strategy, and in a way that, and I think you mentioned the Simes, like, you could do it this way, but you may not gain that much, you could do it this way, and so I think that's, that's worked pretty well. And so I think it's not, that's not the same thing as kind of a budgetary conversation going into it saying, we only want to spend $30,000 on this phase of this thing. If it was an insurance, like tort claim, that would be easy to do, but with a land rights claim, that's really very difficult to do because we're preparing to defend, you know, our case on the land rights. So, you know, kind of taking land use stuff and setting it aside is kind of the cost-benefit analysis, because it's really hard to quantify versus other stuff. Cambers Turnpike being a good example of, like, what's, there's like, there is a discernible cost-benefit analysis you can do. So, so Henry, for your benefit, there have been a lot of strategies, discussions, and sessions that involve members of the select board, and me, and council, and that does influence the cost.
Right. So just to clarify, I think we agree with everything that is said, Stephen. And I think that, Mina, you've probably done a really good job in your billing. It's just something, after you send your bill, there's something missing for the board. And so what I'm asking for is, I think, an internal communication, maybe from Carrie, when we get the warrant on the expenses from council, or possibly, if we don't want to do it in writing, we could have a, you know, a subcommittee or the chair meet quarterly. We can do it anyway, as long as the board is up to speed. That's somehow missing in the loop.
I think there's, the other piece of it is that for three years in a row, we've gone to town meeting.
Right.
Because legal expenses haven't been covered. So.
Right.
I think perhaps the budgeting was too conservative, and I don't think we can, you know, keep doing that.
Right.
The other thing I'll say in defense of the budget number, Susan, is that there are a lot of things that happened during the fiscal year that were not anticipated and budgeted for, that had significant impact on the expenses. And so I agree with you. It's, it's not a good look when you budget one thing based on information that we have and discussions that we have with council before we prepare the legal services budget, but then things happen during the year that the town, then we meet and decide how we're going to strategize and respond, and those choices have, you know, have levels of effort associated with them that drive costs. And I think we've been through a number, I think Mina's memo outlines a fair number of those. And I've increased it every year.
Yeah, so.
Every year, I think, all right, we're adding enough now to be, we talk, based on everything we know today, we're increasing it, and we think this is going to be covered, and then a bunch of things we didn't know on that day come to the fore.
So maybe the budget just needs to be bigger, and I know that that'll impact some other places where it has to come out of, but if it's to the, it's been way out of whack, and some of it's, and it's unexpected, but we're going to have to expect the unexpected in a budgetary sense.
Right. And we're at the beginning of the year now, beginning of the fiscal year, so maybe we can do a better job this year of tracking it than we have been. That's, that's all I'm saying, so.
One other thing I would say is that we should do a better job of making these, these numbers public. And there's, again, another balance between our political function and our legal function, as we experienced with the statement that we drafted on the Sims decision, where I think the political considerations were to make full disclosure of costs, because that is what the, that's what the voters expect us to do, to be frank and honest about what things cost us. And then we, on the other hand, there's some concern that the litigation strategy may somehow be prejudiced by making not only, not only exposing how much is being spent, but how much is likely to be spent if we take certain actions in the future. And my sense is that in most cases, that the, our responsibility to the public, to keep them informed, outweighs the strategic issues with regard to, the strategic issues with regard to the impact on the litigation and making that information available. There's just, being a public, being a public entity that is involved in litigation, is no doubt is, is fighting with one hand tied behind your back. But I think we have to not take for granted that the strategic litigation considerations should always trump the, our obligation to fully inform the public.
I, I agree with that. I would say when we, you know, I'll use two examples. The, I think, I just don't want to mince words about this. The Estabrook litigation drove the costs of your legal budget the last fair four years. There's no question about it. Without it, your budget would look very different. And so there is no, you know, all of these things are good suggestions. We were well under the legal budget for many years before that. And so I think this is an odd, it's not an odd case, but it's a very complicated case, and I would like to, you know, just point that out, because I think you're, if this case is over in October, which we all hope it is, that spending will be very different. That being said, the amount of conversation about the legal budget and the disclosures on it were fairly regular. We didn't do these meetings before the last two years. We didn't do regular reporting of it. We were rarely asked about that amount. There are, as Stephen said, things that came up in the middle of each fiscal year, more often than not out of our control, sometimes out of all the parties' control. This is not hitting on one thing or another. So, that being said, you know, I hear that, I hear we, you know, about the transparency. Ultimately, it's for the board to make the decision whether to reveal a privileged piece of information or not. It's not our call to waive privilege, it's yours and the manager's.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now move on. Oh, Linda?
If I may, this does not involve Mina necessarily, but in addition to the, you know, when we talk about the, weighing the risk, you know, of litigation versus the litigation itself, I also think it would be helpful for the board to look at the, what our insurance costs have been over the last 10 years. And, you know, we've had some litigation matters there that impact our insurance costs, and that's, so it's sort of the, we've got two pieces of sort of analyzing the risk versus.
Correct.
Litigation impact, so that's something for the future, but I think we should also look at that.
Okay.
One of the things that's always surprised me about insurance costs for, for public entities is that you would expect the cost to be lower because of municipal immunity under the Tort Claims Act, and yet for some reason, it just doesn't seem to happen.
Well, there's, there's been a monopoly, and then, you know, there's some market factors.
But you would think that the cost for a, an organization that has the protection of so much immunity.
Right.
From tort claims, that the premiums would be substantially lower.
Right.
I just had a clarifying question for, I think, for Henry about what is public informa-, I have, if I understood you, you're talking about being public about strategy, and I think, am I correct about that?
No, I'm talking about being public about the costs.
Oh, okay. Yeah, and the costs are after they're incurred. That's when we know what the costs are.
But if you're making decisions about some, you're making decisions on a particular matter, and that, and that decision gives rise to the potential for litigation, I think it's important for the people who are making that decision to have some awareness of what that cost, what that dollars and cents cost might be of making a particular decision.
And that information, we've gotten on various occasions. In executive session.
I don't want to mention specific instances.
Well, I'm just saying that I don't think the town should be divulging strategy if it's not, if it's damaging to our position.
Right, I think, right, I think the gray area comes if you're doing a cost estimate. And, you know, let's say, if we do this plan, it'll cost 100,000. If we do this plan, it's 10,000. And then you're going to end up divulging some kind of strategy that way. So if we get into that sort of thing, that probably is an executive session matter.
Well, we made that decision with the Sims litigation.
Right, and that was an exec.
We said, we said, if we can appeal.
Well, that was in an executive session?
Yes.
No, I was just saying.
Was an executive session, right.
But we, we made a state, we also published a statement.
Right.
We did, yeah.
But the strategy discussions occur in the executive session.
But we made a decision based on what the costs would be.
Right.
To take a certain course of action.
Right. Okay.
It was part of the consideration.
Right, in the executive session, right. Right, it's difficult sometimes to be both transparent and protective litigation.
And that's the, that's the curse we're born for.
That's right. Okay, any further comments? Let's move on to finalizing and adopting the fiber broadband task force charge. So this is, I think, the third time we are looking at this. Maybe the third time will be the charm. Does anyone have any further changes? Any comments?
I had a comment, but I addressed this with Carlin earlier, and it was about, the two additional citizens at large are technical experts in broadband, and so I was asking about the PEG Access Advisory Committee representative, and I've been told, and Carlin assured me that that person was actually on the front end of our broadband project. So that would certainly be another technical.
Correct.
Set of skills that would, I think, would be great on this committee.
Yes.
Thank you for all the, the work and the editing. Matt?
Well, I think it's.
Actually, a lot of people worked on this. Matt worked on a lot of things, but not this one.
I just had the biggest hatchet, that's all.
Yeah.
Everything else, I think, was other.
Right. We had input from the petitioner, Gail Hyer. We had input from.
CMLP.
CMLP. So I'm hoping now that we have a consensus, and we're ready to go with this.
Well, thank you to all parties.
Yes, definitely. Any other comments or changes? Okay, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay, move to, sorry. Move to approve the fiber broadband task force charge as included in the meeting materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent, okay. And now we are on to another charge that we hope is the third time, third time is the charm, and that is the Diversity Equity Inclusion Commission. Matt did take the lead on this.
Yes, and I'd like to thank Anita Tekler and members of the League of Women Voters Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee for their assistance in reviewing the proposed changes to the, that led to this draft.
Absolutely. I think a lot, a lot of this charge comes from the League of Women Voters Group, who I understand was maybe 20 individuals who worked on it. So that's really great. Questions or comments from the board?
I think we're ready to go.
Yeah.
All right, we're ready for the motion.
So move to approve the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission charge is included in the meeting materials.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Anita. Thank you, Nancy Brown, and everyone else. Oh, also I should mention, we have in the miscellaneous correspondence, letters from the Holy Family Parish, and another letter from Anita Tekler on behalf of the league. Thank you for all the many, many people who have worked on this. I think it's an excellent document, and now we are ready to recruit people for the DEI Commission. And our next item is the Civil War Monument Task Force. Henry has been taking the lead on that. Henry, you have a few changes tonight that you handed out, some typos?
There were, there were literally corrections to typos, I think three of which Matt, Matt pointed out to me, like, such as in the paragraph two, putting an "as" on the, at districts for historic districts, the changing it is to an "as", and I think one other similar change. So there's no changes of substance in any way. We just cleaned, cleaned up the mistakes that come because my, my eyes are getting old.
Got a question for you, Henry. On the page two, in the middle item, August 11th, 2014, historian Rick Fries, should there not be a comment between historian and Rick Fries?
No, because historian Rick Fries requested that. I mean, I don't want to be a granarian about it, but he is the one who requested.
Right, so there wouldn't be a comment after historian.
No, actually, there should be no comment after the word historian.
Right.
When we get to that level, we know we're there.
I had to have an amendment to this.
No, I think we, I think we will just risk the potential embarrassment at some point that we are, we are accused of being illiterate.
Okay.
And I think I can take it. And I think I can take it.
Other changes or comments from anyone?
Thank you, Henry.
Thank you, Henry, and everyone who worked on this. And we are ready to recruit. I understand we already have some people who want to be on this. Great.
Okay. Move to approve the Civil War Monument Task Force charge as amended in this meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And we'll just have the approval date to the top. Sorry to be a burden.
Okay. So we are ready to recruit for all three of those committees. Wonderful. All right, we are now up to the town manager evaluation. So I am just going to make a few remarks. And then Stephen would like to make a statement, and then we'll take comments from the board. So as we said about six or seven weeks ago, the goals are to have a fair and honest and objective process, to preserve anonymity of the people filling out the forms, to comply with the open meeting law, to complete this in a timely way. Our goal was August 1st, so it's taken us a little bit longer to have specific and useful information in the eval to evaluate how well the town manager did on last year's goals and to set new goals for the upcoming year. The evaluators were five select board members from last year, including Jane Hodgkiss, who has since then left the board. The self-evaluation from the town manager. And 30, out of the 33 invited staff members participated. They are members of SMT, division managers, and the town manager's office. The board, on behalf of the board, I want to extend a huge thank you to these 30 employees who participated and to the HR Director, Amy Foley. And I really want to confirm again that all staff responses were kept entirely anonymous through the Survey Monkey and the firm of Cedar and Chandler. We only received the consolidated table of responses. We don't know who marked which boxes. And only the town manager and myself have received the comment sections. So now I'd like to ask Stephen if you would like to comment?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Terry. So it was a lot of information in the evaluation. And I'm thankful for the feedback, including the feedback that wasn't really what I wanted to hear. I find that feedback always to be very valuable, too. I think if I would just kind of touch on a few overarching themes as my kind of takeaways. And I think the first thing, and I did touch on this in my self-evaluation. You know, we talk about the impact of the pandemic. And there's, there's time and energy spent responding specifically to COVID. That was really time and energy, similar to the hard drive data breach issue. There was a lot of time and energy spent on that that wasn't spent on a number of things. But then there were also the limitations on what we could do, when we could meet, and all those other, you know, kind of constraints that we all operated under. And if there's a single category that I think between those, between the hard drives and the ensuing pandemic, which as you, the timeline was, I started in mid-August. In mid-October, 108 hard drives went missing. By the time we kind of got finished with all of that process and everything we went through, it was mid-January, and then I was watching the news about something happening in Italy and South Korea. That seemed pretty dire. And then, as you know, at the beginning, in the middle of March, then it was upon us. So I really, I don't think there really has been a clean pocket, you know, for, as a football analogy, to really start doing, developing really the essential currency of this work, and that is relationships. Relationship development, I think, has been the single biggest missed opportunity because of those circumstances and others. And some of it is on me as well. Feeling that I was too constrained in the, in the demands of the job when I, when really developing relationships was a high priority. But developing relationships with the community during a time where we really couldn't, you know, you all, I think, have heard me say Zoom is okay for sustaining relationships, but it doesn't really work for developing them. I think everybody's been on Zoom long enough to have that, that feeling of disconnectedness. And I think even meeting here together now is a different, is a different level of connection. I think the goal-setting session that we did a few weeks back was much more productive because we were all here in the same room. And it was a very productive session. And we just, I mean, a year without any of that, really. And so I think, and the reason why I'm touching on relationship development is that when it relates to, you know, how the community views either me personally or the work that we're doing, or how the board views me personally or the work that we're doing, if you don't have those foundational relationships better developed, then it, you know, you can't get that second chance for a first impression. And my, my fear is that I never will. And so when, when hopefully soon, there'll be a time where we can do more of that, I hope that I'll get a, from, from people, from people who haven't had a chance to kind of interact with me personally and develop their relationship, I'll, you know, I think we can give each other, give ourselves a second chance to do that. And I think a lot of the feedback about kind of missing the mark on what the expectations are or what, like what individual board members want to know, I think that's a result of, it could be the result of, I think if we, sorry, let me say it differently. If we had had a lot more kind of individual conversations and a lot more in-person things and, you know, after the meeting, chit-chatting a little bit, say, well, if you'd said this to me this way, I understood it better. Not having any of that, really, I think, influenced not really fully understanding what specific board members want. And I know it's talking about, the board has expectations, but the board's expectations are simply a composite of your, of the five of your individual expectations. And so realizing what the, what the individual pieces of that, of that composition are is something that I feel like I haven't done a good job in doing. And some of that's circumstantial, some of that is, is attention on my end. The other thing, overarching thing, I guess, what I would touch on is style versus substance. I think on the substance component, I think there was a lot of good feedback. I think despite the difficulties, you know, that I've just articulated, we did a lot. And when we reviewed the goals from '20 to '21, I think it was a really extremely productive year, given the limitations we were under. And, and so I think that the, from an operational standpoint, the town really did very well. And I think even in the staff evaluations, that was a common theme for most things. Not everything, but I think for most things, it was the basics were being done, were being done, I was saying, somewhere between adequately and excellently, depending on the situation. But we were, we weren't failing to fulfill our role for the organization, and that was important. From a style standpoint, I think, again, going back to relationship development, some of that, you know, was a little more challenging. And I think the feedback related to style was a little more pointed. And, you know, I, I may have different views. I think as I laid out my self-evaluation, I think my, my perspective on the past year, I tried to, you know, write clearly in that self-evaluation. So some of that doesn't line up with the feedback I got from board members and staff. And that's a difference of perspective. But I will say that, you know, I, it was a tough year. In reading the feedback that I got, I didn't realize how tough it really was. And I think that that's something that really impacted how I, you know, conducted myself really during the year and how my, how that, and I know it definitely impacted my style. And some of that was not really realizing in real time, you know, that I really, I really wasn't, I really wasn't being my best self. You know, I really was not at my best at times. Certainly, level of focus, I found, looking back, I realize now the level of focus was sometimes hard to maintain because of the pace and of, because of the pace of the work, the volume of the work, the shifting variables, the pressures from expectations, but also the pressures from, you know, things, the pressure from things beyond our control is always, in my mind, greater than the pressure from things that are within our control. Because at least you can do something about the things that are giving you pressure within your control. Stuff outside your control is worse because, you know, I, I don't have the tools to fix something, but it's still my responsibility. And I think we, there's a few examples that I could point out, but I think you know what they are. So I guess I would say that, again, I'm grateful for the feedback. There are some specific ways that I know I need to be, just be better. And it was certainly, like I said, I certainly viewed it one way. Or I viewed it in ways that, like I said, are different than some members of staff and some members of the select board viewed it. But I think, I think the results that we achieved despite all of that were notable. And I, you know, I think one of the things I feel good about is you are a smart, committed group of people who I think want to see what's best for the community. And hopefully I've demonstrated that I am that as well. And that I want to see, and I want to see what's best for Concord and do my best to serve the town of Concord. And hopefully, we can keep doing that.
Thank you. Comments from the board? Who would like to go first?
I had a set of comments on the evaluation itself, on the draft evaluation that I distributed at the beginning of this meeting. And I hope as well that I can share them online through Zoom, just so that others can follow along. So I will attempt to do that right now. There we go. And just, there were a few aspects of the evaluation that I just, I apologize if I didn't bring them up last time. But I do think that they're discreet enough that we could perhaps deal with them tonight without further revisions beyond this. So the first is from the section Goals from Previous Year. It's the introductory paragraph on page 34 that begins, this is a hard section to report because the period of COVID has masked a great deal. And the rest of the paragraph goes into details about specific things relating to goals for the previous year rather than kind of introductory material. So I, I suggest that those comments have been covered elsewhere in the evaluation. They don't, they don't really fit in that paragraph. And so I would just suggest striking, striking the remain, the rest of that paragraph.
I had the same problem, Matt. I agree with you on that.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that? All right, the second is on the section B, Relationship with the Select Board. There was a review of the different comments from different select board members. And one of them mentioned that the town manager had been rated as consistently meeting expectations. But in fact, there is no category called consistently meeting expectations. So my assumption is it should have said consistently meets and occasionally exceeds expectations.
And I went back, Matt, you mentioned this to me the other day. And I went back and I looked at the tallies, and you're absolutely correct. It should say consistently meets and occasionally exceeds expectations. Thank you for catching that.
And then I pointed out two areas where there just was the wrong font to use. So I don't think that needs discussion. It would just be nice cleanup. And then I think the most substantive, though, remarks are relating to the goals for upcoming year, section H. And that's page 47 of the packet. And there, Goal Four is that all town departments, offices, and services should be reopened to the public by September 30th, 2021. But my concern is just seeing how the pandemic continues to evolve. It just may not be appropriate to set that as a goal. I, I would love for that to be the case. But just in terms of a prescriptive goal, it just seems like we're saying, hey, town manager, get on it. Get this, get these offices open by September 30th. And I just don't think that, under the circumstances, especially given that, I think generally, the select board has complimented the town manager on his ability to protect the public, that, you know, this isn't really the right tone or item.
Matt, I just want to, I don't have that page in front of me. I thought.
Page 47.
Right, I thought that it said, oh, okay, you know, right. I thought that that goal says something about unless there's further emergency or something like that. Don't have it in front of me.
Here it is, here it is.
Yes, unless there is a further declaration of emergency, or maybe we should.
Is that the criterion?
Right, maybe we should change that unless, basically, unless the pandemic gets worse. Because we heard tonight that Stephen is planning.
He's planning to open the offices. I mean, I don't know why this has to be a directive in this evaluation.
Well, maybe that's the real question that you have then, Stephen.
Looking at it here, it says for number four, unless there's a, you know, all town offices, department services should reopen, blah, blah. And then unless there's a further declaration of emergency, town manager should. But what Matt's talking about, I think, is item five, which does not have that.
Oh, yeah, item five.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
This is just item four. And again, I, you know, again, I don't think that it's necessary, frankly.
What do other members think?
Yeah, it's a bit specific in terms of, I mean, the other goals are not, I mean, that's a very specific directive. But it is, it's qualified in your, in the way it's stated.
Do you, do you want to omit this goal or change it or?
I think at this point, it's, you know, the town manager's already said it's going to happen. And, yeah, I don't think we need it.
Okay. Henry, what do you think?
Well, I think that's right. It is, it is going to happen, so I think it's a box you can check as a goal. And it's fulfilled. And these are just goals. These are not mandates or requirements. And if you set a goal and that goal is not achieved, as with some other goals, there's an explanation for why that goal was not achieved. So I, I don't see that there's a, I think it's probably useful to try and actually put a little heat on to get the town offices open. And if, and if, and this isn't a lot of heat, it's just almost a serving suggestion.
When you say, okay, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
When you say open, what do you mean by that?
Well, it says with all the services that were pre-COVID, is what it says.
I mean, because, because even without the townhouse being open, we've by and large done that. Do you mean, we have adjusted the schedules a little bit, but we're, we've been open, I think, I think August, being August, most of the places were open.
By open, we don't mean functioning. By opening, we mean.
Opens the public.
Open door, open with employees in place, that's what we mean by open. Not that you can get a building permit online.
Yeah, that's, okay, that's fine.
There are people in the building inspector's office. And there are people in the board of health office. There are people in the town clerk's office. And they are there from whenever it was, 8:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon, except for Fridays during the summer. I didn't necessarily mean by open.
Or if you have new office hours, post the new hours, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've already done that, so that's, that's fine.
I think it's just, again, you would have to rewrite this in terms of the services that were available pre-COVID and about the declaration of emergency. So.
Well, the declaration of emergency is already in there, right?
No, but I mean, is that the criterion?
Well, I'm open to suggesting.
Well, but I, my suggestion is just cut this.
Okay. So we have one person who wants to cut it, one person who wants to keep it.
And my other suggestion is that we not have ambiguity and that we not have to go through another round of drafting.
No, 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 this is, we really want to finish tonight.
So that's why also cutting seems very, you know, effective as a strategy.
I was also suggesting to cut it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I can, I'll go along with that.
All right, so. All right, so we have a consensus to cut it, a majority. Okay, and-
And then the, the last comment, which I think is perhaps the most substantive, is that there is Goal Five, which says, within the next sixty days, the town manager shall, should develop a strategic multi-year plan for each of the following key issues and update the select board on progress monthly. And there are ten items, so ten multi-year plans within the next sixty days. So my assumption is that these were all different suggestions made by different, uh, members and that were assembled together into a list that looked at in its totality seems unreasonable to me.
Yeah, make it sixty-five.
Sixty-five multi-year plans, okay. So my suggestion is that, yes, we could have a discussion here and come up with the three or four that makes sense. But I think that most of them are items that we are already scheduled to discuss in the course of our business in FY twenty-two. And, um, that some of them don't really need multi-year plans. And that really, there's only one that is kind of drawn from the internal evidence of this evaluation, which is the final item J, which is define his own professional development goals for the year and present to the select board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I would suggest eliminating A through I. And, uh, just simply go to the last item.
Okay, before we take comment from people, um, first of all, Matt, thank you for going through really carefully and finding these and suggesting these changes. And then, um, I'm going to take responsibility for, um, that I, I totally agree. What I did here was instead of having twenty-five goals, I tried to consolidate a lot of suggestions. And I didn't do a very good job because they don't all need multi-year plans. And they don't, they're, they're all different. And I tried to put them together and it didn't work. So you're absolutely right. Now the question is what are we going to do about that? And I don't mind having a five-minute, ten-minute discussion, but I really want to avoid, um, putting off the final eval. I think we can come to an agreement tonight. Linda?
So, um, I guess I'm going to have to agree with Matt for the third time tonight.
Uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Well, at least I might not agree with him.
I, I had a similar reaction in terms of many of these, uh, probably most of these, except the last one, is in fact on the board goals. And we are going to have a session where we talk about prioritizing those. Um, I, I think you said as one of the topics, focus groups. I thought that's what I-
That might be a good idea, but I-
But, but, but in any case, all of these are on the board goals. And for the year, except for that last one.
Well, okay, but so there are, the suggestions that people had were that the town manager should, um, for example, come in with an idea about, A, the lack of phone service, you know, et cetera, et cetera, for each one of these. Each person had their own ideas about the priorities. And I, I didn't do a good job lumping them together, but-
So, so another way to capture some of this is to talk about, um, seen movement, um, you know, some definitive plans and movement on items that are on the board goal.
Okay, that, yes, that, that's, so it's, you take A through I and say, um, you know, something like the town manager should, um, engage with the board and help plan, help the board move along toward its goals for the year. So, something like that.
And then you could just list the topics as opposed to-
Make progress to achieve.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it, it wouldn't be a sixty-day multi-year plan.
Right, right.
Except maybe you want it, J, you want it not multi-year.
I mean, I have not found the town manager to be reticent with regards to advice on these various issues as we address them in our meetings. So I just, you know, in the course of our FY twenty-two goals, which we have jointly set, I think we will have discussions on these items and we will get his advice and, and collaboration.
I don't think letter H is even lawful.
Succession planning.
Yeah, you're not even allowed to ask people when they're thinking about retiring.
No, that's not what that one means, yeah.
Yeah, that, that definitely I am, if we were going to keep it on, I definitely had some issues with that one. And I also wondered what hotspots meant under C.
Yeah, well, um, so, you know, basically, uh, one thing I did do was put everybody's comments in unless I couldn't read them.
Well, you're inclusive.
There's too many in there.
That was a good thing to do.
No, you, you tried to make-
Yeah, uh, okay, so what should we do?
Well, it's, it's a nuage and it's not going to be internally consistent because different people at different points of view. And I think that's okay. It's okay for it to just reflect various opinions of members of the board.
I, I don't think it is appropriate for goals for the upcoming year. That has to be, it's prescriptive. You know, we are, we're saying, look, town manager should build consensus through authentic participation, collaboration, transparency, and decision-making. We've given that guidance. I think it's consensus guidance based upon what I read in the eval. This gain knowledge and culture of Concord, I think, actually even in the, in the self eval, there's been some discussion about the impact of COVID on that and other things. And then, you know, the relationship with the select board needs some, some help. We've covered that. We just talked about cutting the business about reopening offices. And then it gets back to, okay, what do we need an action plan on? And I think that based upon the eval, this idea about professional development calls and, and development plan for growth in the town manager role, I, I think that that sounds right. And it's not in our FY twenty-two goals. So, sounds good. Let's do it.
But we also, just to play devil's advocate for a minute, we need an action plan for, um, the phone service in downtown area. We need an action plan for ARPA.
Well, we as a town need it.
Right, right, it's a joint effort.
And we have that on our FY twenty-two goals, don't we? So we're going after, that's, you know, by, by reference, the town managers included our FY twenty-two goals.
Okay, so I like Linda's suggestion. What if we took number five and we just changed it to an A and a B? And, um, A could be what Jay says now, develop the professional development plan, okay?
Okay.
And B could be, um, you know-
Make, make progress to achieve on the following items and then-
But is that a sixty-day action?
No, no, no.
Well, then it's not, it's not a B under five because B, five is saying-
Well, that would change, right? The wording up there.
Yeah, the wording would change.
Yes.
Well, would, we need to change it. We can't just theoretically change it.
Right, we're going to change it right now. Go ahead, Linda.
What is B?
So, so B might be, um, taking Henry's idea, make progress to achieve, and then list the, just the, the category on each of these.
Right.
Um, below, and then we need to go up and change five.
But, but do you need that if we already have a separate goals document?
I, I think, if I may, I'm going to self-advocate here for a minute because I, I agree with Matt that I think the goal, some of these are encapsulated in the goals and some aren't that we still are going to have to work on.
Right.
What I don't want to have happen is, um, for reasons that may not be within any of our control, progress to achieve doesn't happen on a certain timeline. And then somewhere between now and December thirty-first, it's a reason to make a decision because, well, you know, the community's not healed.
No, right, the, the community cannot be healed in ninety days, right? In thirty or sixty days or whatever, right?
Make progress toward-
Towards select board's goals.
Toward accomplishing, yeah.
The select board's goals, and I, and I know we will. But I, I think there, it, it's obvious to me that there are certain, and I shouldn't say it's obvious to me. I'm well aware that there are certain issues that are, um, more of community interest at certain times than others. And, and that's why we try and move things forward. But there also are variables that, like I said, are, you know, the, the cell tower being a key example of, you know, we, as, you know, with, with the authority over facilities, I can offer up a par, a parcel of town land to say, let's do a tower here. But the regulatory process that has to go through, I have virtually nothing to do with. And so that's one of the things that, um, I wa, I can show you that I'm working with the carriers and consultants and everything else, but it's, it's the, uh, it's how you frame the result that you want and versus my, the town's ability to do it is, is the thing.
It's a point well taken. What if it said, the town manager will offer plans for and make progress toward accomplishing select board goal four?
Yeah, exactly.
And then once we, if, if that makes sense, then we still have, need a little fine tuning down below because there's a couple-
Yes, read that again. That was really good. I love, you got that part right there. Linda's such a good writer.
Can you say it again, right? What, what did I say? The town manager will offer plans for and make progress toward accomplishing select board goals for. And then it would be, um,
um, yeah.
Phone service in the downtown area.
Right, phone service in the downtown area, right.
Sorry, well, make plans for and offer-
The town, will offer plans for and make progress toward-
Okay.
-accomplishing select board goals. Once you see it in writing, I mean, may, may correction, but.
Okay, now we're in trouble because Linda, Matt, and I all agree on something.
And me too. Susan, you have to do that. Okay.
I did, this sounds fine.
All right, and then we'll just list some, like lack of phone service in downtown area. That's one of them. And, um,
Needs to ensure the town board, uh, town board, the, the right staff are in place to fund and grow-
Broadband.
Broadband.
Now, are we, we're asking for monthly updates on all of these?
No, 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 we're not. Skip, we're not, we haven't written that part yet.
Okay. Are we on it?
I, I think we, yeah.
I just wondered.
The next one would be, um-
Improvements to the health of White Pond.
Yeah, and I don't know what other hotspots.
Yeah, skip that. I don't know what that is.
Okay.
That one we're already doing.
Yeah, that's well-
Let's skip the capital, I think.
So, sorry, and I'm trying to keep up with you. So I, I've, um, tried to update this number five.
No, we haven't written that part, Matt. We're only-
So first of all, get rid of the within the next sixty days.
Okay.
So I guess-
I do think that there is some urgency on the leadership development plan personally. And that actually that was helpful for that one personally.
Well, maybe we, maybe we can come back to how we-
All right, let's have a number four and a number five then. That's fine. So number four is just going to be J. You know, within the next sixty days, define his own professional development goals, da, da, da. How's that?
Yeah. I'm having trouble with the itemizing of these things, um, in the, in the way it's presented here.
Okay, let's just finish this one. So within the next sixty days, the town manager should define his own professional development goals for the year, present to the select board, including a development plan for his growth as a town manager and ways he plans to seek assistance.
And I think we, the rest of this may be cut. It seems that it tore up some ink.
Okay. Well, I don't know. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Number five, the town manager will offer plans for and make progress toward each of the following key issues and update the select board periodically. So before we get into the list-
Toward, without an S, yeah.
Okay.
I can't see that. I got kicked out of Zoom.
Everybody okay with that before we get to the list?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, address lack of phone service in the downtown area.
I mean, I think it's, it should be left, lack of-
Yeah, yeah, period. Lack of phone service in the downtown area, period. Okay, um.
I feel like we've addressed B personally. I mean, maybe it's because I've been at the light board meeting, the, um, the report. I mean, there, we already have gotten an agreement for periodic reviews, right? That's already in the offing.
From the light board.
Well, just on that, I think we ought to actually establish a, a schedule for that. But that has nothing to do with what we're doing here.
Okay, everybody wanted to leave B? You okay with that?
I'm just trying to create a list that's doable.
Otherwise it could be periodic, um, um-
Yeah, it could just be like-
Periodic updates on the-
But we have already negotiated those. We, we are getting periodic updates, right? That, that was one of the outcomes of the discussion we had, a focused discussion we had on that.
Well, they are coming back one more time, which-
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, it was a significant event with significant implications.
Yeah.
And I, I think it doesn't hurt to, to have it visible. I mean, it's one more thing that town manager can check off.
Yeah.
Because he's already-
So.
Improvements, um-
Continued ecosystem improvements for White Pond.
Yeah, yes. And D, aren't we all bound to that?
We're still on C here.
Okay.
Improvements. Okay, ecosystem improvements to the health of White Pond, period. Yeah. Not sure what this person had with the hotspots. Okay. D, I think we're probably doing it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's cross that out.
It's E, we're going to have a focus meeting.
We have a focus session coming on middle school.
Yeah, I think we're doing that one.
And, and also I would just say on the committee, there's definitely a focus, so.
This one we should keep, I think.
Because it's a new, um-
A new initiative.
New initiative.
Yeah, okay, so.
And for me, that would be the argument for keeping the capital planning task force. I think there was a lot of community interest in that and-
I'm okay if you want to keep it, um, if it goes either way. Susan?
I, I would put it in for Lind, what Linda said about the, um, it being a new.
Okay.
I would, I would add to, I think, operating costs also, operating cost and capital investment.
Okay, hold on a minute, we're, um, okay. You're talking about E, Henry, the rec?
Yes.
Okay, hold on one second then. Mutation of capital, good. Okay, the rec including direct and indirect operating costs. What do you, what do you want to add?
Including, including capital, well, I-
Capital costs is here.
It says-
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, ARPA, I think we need to hear, we need to discuss ARPA definitely. It's a lot of money.
I hit the wrong thing.
So discuss priorities and budget, discuss with select board?
Well, it's just, it, it's our- Well, it's just, it, it's already up here. It says, offer plans and make progress towards these, and update the, on, you know, all these issues.
Okay, so priorities and budget for ARPA funds.
Yeah.
Okay.
H is gone.
Okay, we're taking out H, okay. Oh, you mean G?
Oh, yeah, it's now G, yeah.
Okay. Two, four, five, six, seven.
So G is.
Do you think you want to cut it? I mean, it's not resolution, it's basically.
Well, it might be.
It, it's es- extraport litigation or the, and and the community healing process or something like that.
Well, it's basically what it says, yeah.
Well, resolution is sort of like. Okay, I guess that's right.
You can't hold him responsible for the resolution.
It's, maybe this one is more about beginning a process of community healing. If that's what's under the manager and our control, we're not, we don't know what the judge is gonna do.
He could have resolved it. We should have put it on last year's.
How about the year before, right?
I, well, I, I think that that's a, I mean.
That's a tough one.
The board's gonna have to really lead the charge on that.
I agree. I just, I don't, I don't think.
I don't, yeah.
Maybe we'll take it out then.
I think that's a good list. Six, six items. I mean, it's still longer than I expected, but.
And the last one is mentioned in the goals anyway, along with a lot of other things.
What the healing about extraport? Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
Okay, I'm feeling better about that.
Okay, other comments that people have. Linda, oh, I think Linda might have had some comments and then Henry.
No, I just said I'm feeling better about it.
Right, no, but before you had said you wanted to comment?
We've taken care of a lot of them.
Well, I think that all we're doing at this point is agreeing on what the report, what the report should say.
Yes.
Rather than soliciting comments on what is in the report. And my remarks would be more directed toward the interpretation of some of the information, which I think is probably be better saved for another occasion.
Okay. Anyone else on the board have other changes or suggestions or comments on, on the document? Thank you again, Matt and Linda, for looking at this carefully and improving the document. It's still very long, but better than it was, so. Okay, Stephen, do you have more comments?
No, I think, again, I think that, that how you work through things and I think how we work through things, as you just demonstrated right there, is the strength of the board. And I think that that's something that I want to be able to, to do a better job supporting.
Thank you, okay. Okay, so I'll just give Matt a moment here to get caught up.
Matt, you type under pressure better than anyone I've ever seen.
We can't see, oh, yeah, we can't see.
Let's just say that I, I do it in the daytime.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna hide your type on my keyboard like that.
Sorry, I gotta close this. Get to this. Go. All right, so are we ready for a motion on new valve?
Um, one second. Jeremy, are you going to be able, like if Matt emails you this document, would you be able to make the changes and?
Absolutely, yep.
All right, then.
So what I've done is just rephrase this from sort of opinions to directives. So under goal A, strike the second half of the investor pair as follows. B, you know, change consistently meeting expectations, change the font, and then goals, you know, basically revise, revised goal as four and five as follows. Okay?
Well, right, we're striking the old goal four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, great. Okay, great.
Okay.
So, okay, yeah, we kept that. Okay, good.
All right, we're ready for a motion.
Sorry, I closed the motions document, so let me open that again.
Do you want maybe unscreen share?
Yeah, that sounds good. Also did my motions document disappear. Okay, here we go. Oh, well, we did not have a motion, but I think if we, okay. Okay, move to adopt the town manager evaluation as amended in tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody, for participating. All right, we now turn to committee nominations.
Okay, Jim Ricker of sixty-eight Shore Drive to the White Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire on April thirty of twenty twenty-four. Gordon Brockway of eleven of one twelve Hill Street to be the light board representative on the fiber broadband completion task force for a term to expire February first of twenty twenty-two. Scott Hopkinton, Hopkinson, excuse me, of sixty-seven Indian Spring Road to be the peg access advisory representative to the fiber broadband completion task force for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty-two. David Hessel of thirty Concord Green to be the HOA representative on the fiber broadband completion task force for a term to expire February first, twenty twenty-two. Mark Howell of six sixty-eight Nurse Nat Hill Road and Gail Hyer of fifty-four Nancy Road to be the at-large representatives on the fiber broadband completion task force for terms to expire February first, twenty twenty-two.
What is the HOA?
Homeowners Association. That was a multifamily dwell, a representative of multifamily dwelling.
Right.
It specified multifamily dwelling or homeowners association.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Now committee appointments.
So Corey Atkins of five Concord Green to the peg access advisory committee for a term to expire on April thirty. I move to appoint Corey Atkins of five Concord Green to the peg access advisory committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Sarah Greenwood of five twenty Lexington Road to the Natural Resources Commission representative to the community preservation committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Charles Phillips of sixty-five Fair Given Road to serve as the housing authority representative to the community preservation committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Burton Flint of sixteen forty-three Main Street to serve as the planning board representative to the community preservation committee for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Paul Boehm of eleven Ridgewood Road to serve as the recreation commission representative to the community preservation committee for a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Grace Shimonio of ten Dana Road to the agricultural committee as an associate member for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Alexa Anderson of fourteen Park Lane to serve as the school committee representative to the middle school building committee for a term to expire at the completion of the project. Heather Vought of thirty-three Alden Road to the middle school building committee for a term to expire January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Committee liaison reports.
I can start.
All right, Susan.
I, I, I just had a few, I, I've gone back to capture the ones I didn't report on last week. There were only a couple. The first was Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee, which had, it was a fairly routine meeting in terms of progress on the assignments on various conservation parcels. But I do want to just point out that they all, this is a really, a boot, literally a boots-on-the-ground group. They're out there in the mud and the ticks and everything, looking at all these pieces of land, so, and they're all like all the other committees in town, these people are very dedicated to, to their task, so it's a pleasure to be able to observe that. White Pond Advisory Committee met on July twenty-eighth. There's a presentation from Jonathan Higgins, who, who presented also at Natural Resources, who is the person who, he's got the National Science Foundation grant to study cyanobacteria, so he's, he's going to, or has at this point, done a, a project at White Pond. He has a device that looks like sort of a hose that it kind of encircles the blooms and pulls them away into a trap, which that's part one of it, but his research also involves what to do with that material that is captured. He said there's a lot of carbon in it and there, and he's exploring possibilities for that. So that was at no cost to the town because it was part of his research. They, they also spent a fair amount of time discussing the White Pond Vision twenty twenty-one, which they will be discussing at next week's White Pond meeting. There were reports from the youth, what's it called, the youth group that looked at the private road conditions and storm drains. And they have collected data on the septic systems, but that needs some interpretation by Susan Rask, so we don't know the implications of that. And there was a lot of talk about water quality testing and, and, and the condition, the health of the pond. And it was pointed out that White Pond is a state pond with private homes and town-owned land, so that, that informs what, what can and cannot be done, although certainly water quality testing can be done and is being done.
Susan, who did you say was that person who was volunteering with that hose?
Oh, Jonathan Higgins.
Well, thank you to Mr. Higgins for all of that work. That is really.
It's worked out really, it worked out really well so far.
Yeah, he's, yeah. It was a gift, quite a gift.
Yes.
And then my last, I met with, with Gene Goldsberry just to get a background on the Committee on Disability and, and then follow that was, and then there was a meeting on the Committee on Disability just on the twelfth of August. It was a full agenda. I had a conflict. I had personnel at the same time, but what I, what I learned, what's different for select board liaison and Committee of Disability is that they're a voting member. And I, I, they needed me for a quorum at that meeting, so that informed my choice. But they spoke about a, a number of things. The Assistant Town Engineer came and talked about the complete streets, the work they're doing on COMAB, and they had a long discussion about the, they're doing bump outs for the crosswalks, so the visibility will improve. And they had, the committee had, or commissioner had suggestions on the placement of the handicap spaces, mostly relative to Debra's. And there's, there are two. There's one on each side of the street, but they're moving, it was going to be across from Debra's and they're gonna try to move it to just the other side of the driveway to the left of what was the five and dime, which would be part of Debra's. And the engineer had to check the grades and grading and so forth because they're gonna straighten out the sidewalks too. There's a lot of work to be done, but it was interesting to hear all of it and also for, and he was quite receptive to the suggestions of the, of the commissioners. They discussed the library and umbrella arts parking. The parking lot that's currently adjacent to the umbrella arts, there are going to be two spaces that are right on Sudbury Road. The handicapped will stay. And in addition, there'll be two on the other side of the parking lot, on the umbrella building side. And there's one additional one, and I'm blanking on exactly where that is. They also discussed, Kate Hodges was at the beginning of the meeting, and she discussed, there's been a correspondence back and forth from a person who hasn't wanted to meet with any of the, either the commissioner or the town, as the deputy town manager or Ellen Cathcart over issues about plowing the track. Kate did some interesting investigation into this, and the person, the person who presented this complaint had also presented a complaint to Fenway Park. So she followed up with, with Fenway Park and they, they, or someone said that this, that, that claim was upheld at Fenway. And there was some question about the, the the complaint, the person filing the complaints have, there was, the correspondence is threaded with threats of litigation and, but there's been no actual meeting with this person. And Kate discovered that the source, the source of, they're involved with an organization who for a fee will pursue these kinds of claims. And Kate called the organization and said, can I have your, you know, your official documents and your board of directors? And nothing came of that, so that's. And Jean pointed out that they always, and she's a sterling example of this, want to come to some accommodation for legitimate, legitimate claims. However, this is, is not moving forward at this time. The other issue is the parking at the library. When the HTC did not allow the parking on the site, one of the reasons was because of a tree that was there. It was a treasured tree. And it was just a very minor distance that, that determined their decision to deny it because of the location of the tree. Well, the tree in one of the big storms we had recently, part of it fell off, you know, a big limb came down. And then they discovered that the tree was really rotted from the inside, so the tree is gone. So Jean contacted Sherri Littlack to ask about, and also the chair of HTC to inquire about reexamining the issue. And her point about this and the COMAB and the umbrella parking is that if, you can have this wonderful facility that is, is totally accessible inside, but if people don't feel safe parking outside the building, they're not gonna come. And that, she felt was very much the case for, and the commissioners agreed, for the library, so that's in process with talking, talking with those parties to see if that can, if they can revert to the plan that they had, that the committee, that had been recommended before and denied by HTC, another hardworking group. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a couple. So first was the light board meeting. At the light board meeting, there first was a discussion of the audited financials for the light board. And last year, there were more expenses than revenue, so the balance, you know, the fund balance declined. There are, there is a plan, of course, to increase revenues going forward and expect that the light works in reasonable shape. But then the next thing was a discussion led by the, this company, Energy New England, which is responsible for sourcing the power for the light plant. And they described the portfolio as it is today and going forward. And going forward, that's sort of not admitting a portion of the portfolio, the expected investment in RECs, you know, to pay for the renewable aspects of power for other power that we can't source locally. It does seem that there will be a significant component that will be nuclear energy going forward. And there was a lot of discussion about that because just the nature of nuclear power being more of what you call a base load, it's constant. Whereas wind and solar, real renewable sources tend to be highly variable. And it's very difficult to actually create a full coverage of the energy needs with strictly those sources. There are techniques and, you know, some of them are kind of emerging technologies around developing storage systems and other kinds of power sources that can be constant. And of course, they'll still, they'll be looked at in the future by, that that's where we are at with the portfolio. And then there was a discussion of broadband and by the broadband director saying that they're, you know, looking at making a major investments in the infrastructure to take it into the next decade, you know, of systems. That it's basically sound as it is designed today, but that it could be, you know, renovated and expanded to that sort of next level. And then you have already heard at the zoning board of appeals meeting, the members basically concurred that they want to deny the permit application for the earth removal permit. And so they instructed town staff and council to prepare a draft decision for their next meeting. And so that will be then voted at the next meeting. But then other, other things that happened at the ZBA meeting. One was that the second meeting in a row, we had a two-family that was approved. So, you know, this bylaw is actually taking effect that builders are choosing to produce two families rather than single-family units. And in some cases, clearly, they play, single-family houses still being built. And then the other was that Patrick Clary came with an updated design for the building that's proposed for, what is it, 30B Commonwealth Ave? It's a, it's a building that is based upon the design of an old building called the Association Hall that was once where Salt Box Kitchen, Salt Box Kitchen is actually the first floor of what was formerly a four-story building. And so this will, you know, is proposed to be a three-story building. And it's been reviewed with the West Concord Advisory Committee. And this revised design has also been reviewed with the West Concord Advisory Committee. And it was just presented to the ZBA. Everyone agreed that it looked better than the design that people already liked. So that was, you know, given a thumbs up.
If that's the building, that two of the eight units are affordable, the rented units?
That's right, that's right. And also, the developer said that it will be all electric, you know, utilities in there. Though he will run gas to the commercial portion of the building in case there's a future tenant that needs gas service, but there's not a plan to use gas.
Are you saying Salt Box Kitchen is moving?
No, no, Salt Box Kitchen used to be a much taller building. The building where Salt Box Kitchen is.
Right.
And it looked totally different.
So it's staying?
It's staying where it is.
This is further down the street?
This is further down the street. They're building a building that, that is a modern variation on the original, what was there. And so what's great is, we talked about design guidelines earlier tonight, is that this definitely, you know, helps bring, keep and enhance even the character of West Concord.
Is this the location that's to the, to the left of the Lawless Holst Street?
It's right there where between, well, the hair studio and, you know, Lawless and the haircutting place. And there's a big grass lot. And then it's, you know, what the bakery and all that.
The Chauvin.
The Chauvin Bakery.
Part of the Chauvin Bakery.
So that whole area, there's a grass lot that is proposed to be a building. I mean, it's already got all its approvals. So it's a matter of now getting building permit and building. So those were the two key meetings.
All right. Linda and Henry, let's go next.
Linda?
Okay. I attended the planning board meeting and the West Concord Design God Unpreambled was presented. Will Holden, the new town's new land manager, will be, this will be a transition year for him in terms of dealing with the tree preservation process. Currently, we are paying an outside consultant for that. And then there was a lengthy public discussion, a public hearing discussion regarding an issue related to McCullar Lane that eventually got approved. And then I attended the Concord Historical Commission and they reviewed, oh, yeah, they reviewed a consultant's recommendation regarding the Ball Benson House proposal to potentially be located at the Wheeler Harrington Lot. And what?
Where is it now, Jill?
It's in a trailer.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Stored, yes, stored at the water department. And the outcome of the evening discussion and presentation was to give Marcia the green light on beginning to engage the public in a discussion on what they would like seeing done with the Ball Benson House and barn, or one or the other, or both. And then there was an initial discussion on further changes to the demolition delay bylaw. And, yeah, and that's it for me.
Okay. Henry?
I have an update from the Board of Registars. There was a memo just came out, which said that on August 12th, they had, the State Census Division has released their census packet information. And that the final new precinct ban will be due on October 20th, which I assume means that the Board of Registars will be back to see us probably the end of September. We need to make room for them.
Absolutely, it's on the list.
It has to happen.
Yes.
The Agriculture Committee is soliciting exhibitors or people to take spaces at Ag Fair on September 11th. We got our, our, whatever it is, our application. And the same application is available to non-farm or nonprofit participants. So I think they will want to encourage organizations to participate in that. And I think you can go, I think they have, this is online on the town website, if I'm not mistaken. And then we're, there's a lot of activity going on with the Board of Health, a campaign that's being spearheaded by Deborah Stark on the subject of permitting, or getting changes to the state health code to permit the use of reusable packaging that customers can bring to food stores to fill so that they, so they don't need to use plastic or paper bags, but they can actually use their own packaging, fill up their own jars with whatever it is, vinegar or, you know, what's that stuff called?
Bulk.
Huh?
Bulk.
Bulk, yeah, bulk. But I think that the vinegar stuff that people drink, the probiotic things.
Apple cider vinegar?
Apple cider vinegar.
Kombucha.
Kombucha?
Yes.
My son loves that.
And also, I'm getting a lot of, a lot of comments from people about the problems of bicycle traffic through Jiuchu Park. Serious problem. And I think some strong feelings that it's a hazard to the, to the people who use the park. It's a park. And that something really needs to be done about, I think, probably rerouting the, rusing the trail so that it doesn't run right through the middle of this very nice park.
Right.
So that's it for me.
Okay.
But I'll have more next time.
So Henry, Jeremy's going to file our application for the Ag Day.
I think he already has.
I already filed.
Oh, you already did.
So we're in. And I think, I think we have you and area. And I will staff that tent. I think we ought to have, you know, materials to hand out, including green cards and lists of committees that people can serve on, vacancies and hand out tea.
Maybe that, you know, should we have some of the annual reports?
Yes.
Yes.
I've sent the list to Jeremy, annual reports, committee lists, green cards.
Hand sanitizer, we've got lots of that.
I have a stack of everything except for the annual report. So I'll see if I can find that.
Great.
Everything else is.
And do we have the tent set up, lined up?
We do.
Okay.
Great, so September 11th.
Do we have our own tent or is it a rec?
It's a rec department tent that I've procured from them.
I have to think I'm going to be helping.
And then we table the chair.
And we also will have tables and chairs that is also included in the package, yeah.
Okay, so everybody come to the Ag Day September 11th. All right, we are now miscellaneous correspondents. We have one item from Tommy Galis and two other letters that I've already mentioned related to DEI. And we are ready for public comment. Nobody live, anybody on Zoom?
We have David Allen on Zoom. David, if you want to unmute yourself, you can go ahead.
David Allen, are you there?
I'm here. Tried the video, but doesn't want to go there. David Allen, East Bridge Road. The creation of the Cyber Broadband Task Force is occasion to back up a little bit and consider the process. Excuse me. There's three items that present themselves for attention, but important to say, not only is this not the moment to get into merits or otherwise of any of the questions raised here, it would detract from the question of process. So just to say what they are in the briefest sort of shorthand form. One is the question of the ratio of required to citizen slots, whether or not that should move from five to two to four to three. The other, the second one is inclusion of a committee, in this case PAC, when it was not in the article text and doesn't work on these subjects. And finally, some text, which happened to have got dealt with last week. So as said, that did get dealt with last week, but only after frankly, much more effort than should have ever been called for, for it finally to come up at the 11th hour. The other two items didn't get dealt with. And just to illustrate the importance of this, it came out in the discussion earlier in the meeting tonight, that there is a misunderstanding on the board there. In fact, one of the two citizen participants is not a technical expert. Once again, we're not here to litigate anything. It just instead is an illustration of how important it is for these matters to come up for public discussion. The public open meeting laws are clear. They're obviously about transparent, open discussion, but far beyond anything legal. We citizens elect the five of you, in simple words, to serve.
I don't have a sense of that.
David, if you could summarize your remarks.
The TV drama film directed by Graham Crenwell starring Yasmin D.
Sorry, say again out there, please.
David, yes, if you could just be briefly summarize your remarks.
I meant the process of that. And if I may point out, I have sat and listened respectfully for hours. And I do trust that you can listen respectfully to what I have to say. I was pointing out that we, I was about to say, we frankly quite appreciate, let me just say personally, I appreciate the extraordinary amount of effort that you put into this. But for the purposes of a vibrant democracy, it's obviously essential that matters of contention come out for discussion as has already been illustrated just a moment ago. That did not happen here.
Okay, thank you very much. And anybody else on Zoom?
Steven Bader, Steven, if you want, go ahead.
Steven Bader?
I just wanted to thank you for the award, for the recognition that the Legal Women Voters got tonight, not only for the Minuteman Media Network Award, but also for the DEI Commission work. And I also, in related to the last item that Henry mentioned about the Ag Day, I wanted to put in a plug, shameless plug, for the Friends of the Library Book Sale on the same day as Ag Day. We will have our, what's usually in June, um, a library lawn book sale, now September 11th. It will be a good day to get downtown, park somewhere if you can find a spot, and walk around to both events. We're cross-promoting our event with the Ag Day people and trying to encourage people to park once and then walk to both events. Thank you for your time and good evening.
Very good, thank you very much. Other comments on Zoom?
We have Pamela Drit. Pamela, if you want to, go ahead.
Thank you, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I appreciate all that you have done. And I noticed in the town manager's purview, I think that we're missing the sustainability issues and goals. Broadband connects to that, but it is not the entirety of it. And we also need to have some awareness of those climate change protection goals that don't fit neatly into one board's purview, such as energy storage possibilities at the new schools, such as the electrification of the entire fleet of police cars and so on. Can you please consider that our ability to legislate, like net zero things are very limited because of the law following behind the science here. So we need to find ways to make our whole town safer and greener. The disadvantages of removing, clear cutting the hill for the development is not just in the truck exhaust from the removal, it is in the carbon sequestration that is removed when you, when you take the hill away. The actual trees are the most powerful carbon removal techniques that we have so far. And the soil itself also does it. So can you please keep those things in mind in every aspect of what you're doing?
Okay, thank you very much, Pamela. Other public comment?
That's the last one on Zoom.
Okay. Then have a motion?
Yes, so move to adjourn to executive session.
Yes. So move to adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing complaints about an employee and to consider what action to take, if any, pursuant to National Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1.
Okay, for this, we need a second, and then we need a roll call vote.
Second.
Okay, with clerk, please call the other.
Sure. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
Ms. Escobar?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson, myself, aye.
And actually, in this motion, and we're not returning, oh, it says that, not return to open session. Okay, great. Okay, the meeting is adjourned to